We're reconvening. I do want to just go back briefly because counsel noted that I forgot to ask for public comment for closed session. So I'm going to open public comment regarding closed session right now.
There is no public comment.
Okay, seeing no public comments, I am going to go on to section three, the consent portion of our agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion or a separate vote? Seeing none, is there any public comment on the consent agenda?
There is no public comment.
Can I move consent?
All right, I have a motion from trustee Haynes. Do I have a second? Rawlings with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries present Costa.
Great, thank you so much. Next up, we're going to move on to the action section of our agenda, section four. And the first item we have is the Board of Trustees of Calbright is happy to announce its decision to select Mackenzie Morris Smith as Vice President of Marketing Communications and Outreach of Calbright. The Board of Trustees will now vote on the agreement with Ms. Smith. Under California law, as the Board President, I am obligated to orally announce all the monetary provisions of this agreement and their values. Once I announce the monetary provisions of the agreement and the associated values, we will have a board discussion and public comment on the item. Then the board will vote on the agreement. The terms of this Vice President of Marketing Communications Outreach Agreement with Ms. Smith include: Appointment on an annual basis beginning September 1st, 2024; An annual salary of $203,416.2; Leave rights consistent with Calbright administrative employees; Membership in Calpers and related employer contribution as set by statute and health benefits as currently offered to current administrative employees. That is my announcement. With that, I'll turn it over for trustee discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comments on this item?
There is no public comment.
For that, colleagues, I will take a motion in a second on the item.
Second.
Did you move it?
Uh, Hildy did.
Okay, so we have Aguinaldo with a motion, Rawlings with a second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Costa.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries president Costa.
Okay, thank you so much. I do want to just note, we have a little bit of an order change here to our agenda. And before we present our next action item, we're going to move to information and reports, item 6.1. This is our third quarter 2024 budget versus actual comparison and fourth quarter projection. Obviously, we want to hear these projections before we take the action item on the budget itself. So with that, I will turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer for his presentation of item 6.1.
Thank you, President Costa, and good afternoon to everyone, Vice President Aguinaldo and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm pleased to be here with you today to present and discuss the third quarter 2024 year-to-date financial results and Q4 2024 projection. Next slide, please. So the agenda for the presentation includes Calbright overview, Q3 actuals, and Q4 projected 2024 update, and next steps. Next slide, please. Calbright overview. So Calbright College fiscal year 2023-2024 annual budget represents strategic vision goals for 2024 and is based on explicit assumption of flat annual revenue at $15 million per year. The overall budget for fiscal year 2324 sets ambitious goals to drive towards a new phase of high-quality growth. Calbright College has developed and has already begun implementing a robust implementation and spending plan covering January 2021 through December 2026. Next slide, please. So now we're going to talk about the Q3 actuals and Q4 projected 2024 financial results. Next slide, please. So there are several Calbright trends which are reflected in these financial results. Specifically, the trends are enrollment growth. Enrollment has increased to approximately 4,500 students as of June 2024. This is a substantial increase, given that we are approximately 2,300 students in March of 2023 and only 1,000 students as of March 2022. Additionally, we have increased employee headcount of 52 full-time and 19 part-time employees to support our enrollment growth. We have incurred costs for the rollout of new programs, data analysis, network technology, which is a pilot phase, and project management, which is also pilot phase. Next slide, please. Now, with those fiscal trends in mind, the actual results in year-to-date Q3 for unrestricted funds include the following. Our headcount has expanded to meet needs of our growing enrollment. This is shown by increases in both academic and non-academic roles. The benefits, academic and non-academic, are derivative in nature and track the level of spending based on the salaries expense. To the right of the Q3 year-to-date tool, this is our projection for Q4. The highlights for Q4 include the following. We're expecting $3.6 million in Q4 funding to result in a year-end balance of $15 million in a portion of them. We projected the Q4 expense amounts based on an average of the prior three quarters. As illustrated, we will be under budget by a small percentage, seven and a half percent. Next slide, please. Now, as the restricted funds or one-time funds. Going down to the expense column of year-to-date Q3, you'll note that we're under budget for academic and non-academic salaries, along with the corresponding employee benefits. This is based on an intentional shift in the number of programs offered in fiscal year 2024 versus the budgeted number of new programs. This shift in new program was due to the adoption of new technology that will enable our direct assessment competency-based education model. We wanted to ensure that we had the right technology platform in place before we rolled out additional new programs. Operating expenses are less than budget due to lower usage of consultant fees. These expenses will be incurred in later periods. And also, our capital outlay is lower than budget primarily due to headquarters expenses and related facilities expense not spent in fiscal year and 2024. These expenses are projected to be spent in the new fiscal year. Next slide, please. For the combined fund slide, the most interesting column is the year and projected amounts. As you can see, the 2024 year on projected revenue, 17.6 million. We are expecting to spend approximately 33.8 million in expenses, which results in a total ending fund balance of 58.7 million. And as you can see, we have sufficient resources to move on into fiscal year 2025. Next slide, please. Thank you. So our next slide is, will show that our June 30th, 2024 final trial balance will be presented to our auditors in September 2024. Our 6/30/2024 audit of financials will be presented to the Board of Trustees per Board Agenda Item 5.2 in December 2024. Next slide. Thank you. Were there any questions?
Trustees, I see trustee Haynes.
So when you, when you, thank you for the presentation. So when you talk about that we have enough funding to go into this next fiscal year. Is that with the assumption, what is the assumption relative to the increase in student population, or is there an assumption?
I'm sorry, can you?
Okay, so we were at, as of June, we were at 4,500 students.
Right.
So my question really goes to, given the projected funding that we will have this fiscal year, are we assuming that there's enough funding there to maintain the 4,500? Or is there a cap relative to the funds in terms of increased student enrollment?
So one point of process is our next action item is next year's budget.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
So this is the end of this year.
My apologies.
We're putting, you know, a nice bow on this fiscal year.
I woke up at five o'clock this morning and had to go walk.
So we'll get into the assumptions for the next fiscal year.
Hold that thought.
Budget approval in the next item.
Yes, okay.
In Southern California, trustees, do you have any questions or comments on the wrap-up of the previous fiscal year's projections and final Q3? Seeing, oh, I see.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, maybe not? Okay, none here, President Costa.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll open it up for any public comment.
There is no public comment, President Costa.
And now, in honor of trustee Haynes, we will go to our next item, which is an action agenda item 4.2. And this is the public hearing and adoption of the 2425 final budget.
Great. Again, good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. Pleased to be here with you today to present and discuss the final version of the draft 2024-2025 annual budget of Calbright College. Next slide, please. The agenda for this presentation includes a review of the 2024-2025 draft budget assumptions, which include the strategic vision framework, major budget goals, new programs, expanding operational capacity. And this will lead us to the draft budget, which was presented at your June 2024 Budget Board of Trustees Meeting. I'll then present a few updates since the June presentation. And finally, I'll present some next steps regarding the sustainable funding model. Next slide, please. 2024-2025 draft budget. Next slide. But first, we'll review the draft budget assumptions covered in the June 2024 presentation. This slide shows that our 2024-2027 strategic vision framework is aligned with our budget. It consists of the priorities, which are to serve students and employers with the goals being expanding multi-dimensional opportunities for adults, fostering skills and driving achievement. The next priority is drive institutional excellence with the goals being building and maintaining a cohesive culture and developing a sustainable funding approach. Third priority is to amplify our innovative approach with the goals being cultivating institutional awareness and forging and expanding strategic partnerships. Strategic vision framework leads into the major budget goals as stated on our next slide. Our major budget goals, there were three major budget assumptions which drove our budget process. The first is to expand our multi-dimensional opportunities, launching new programs. The second is to build and maintain a cohesive culture where we're expanding operational capacity. The third is to forge and expand strategic partnerships where we garner new partnerships and relationships. Next slide, please. So we're implementing four new programs centered around our occupational clusters. As part of Calvert's strategic vision, we are launching up to four new programs designed specifically to prepare adult learners for good available jobs. These new programs fulfill gaps in availability, accessibility of high-quality, high-value training programs, providing working adults with an affordable public alternative. Each program will provide our students with a specific skillset that employers want and which our students can directly apply in the working world. For many students, our programs offer flexibility for different roles within and across industries. We're implementing four new programs noted in bold, which is segregated on our four occupational clusters. On the design innovation, we're launching a user experience and user interface program. Under the healthcare cluster, we're launching the community health work. And under the business cluster, we're launching human resources, talent acquisition, and human resources learning and development programs. Next slide, please. And so we're also expanding our operational capacity. Our second major budget assumption centers on expanding our operational capacity. A key component of Calbright's growth is ensuring appropriate staffing across all levels of the institution so that we can continue to operate effectively as we expand during the immediate high-quality growth phase, as well as during the remainder of our seven-year startup year, which ends in 2027. Critical assumption to serving our expanding student population, their needs, is having the people, expertise, systems, and technology need to serve our students. Taken directly from our 2024-2027 strategic vision framework, we'll focus on expanding operational capacity in step with enrollment increases and the creation and launch of new programs. Complementing this growth, we'll remain committed to evaluation optimization, exploring new ways of engaging with students to nurture their success and building the technology platforms necessary to reimagine teaching, learning, and support with the context of Calbright's model. Next slide, please. And this is the cost due to payroll and benefits. This slide details the effects of our 2025 compensation increase for employees that were present in fiscal year 2024. Annual salary increases were approximately 1.9 million, with the benefits increases equaling approximately 1.2 million and a combined total of salary and benefits equaling 3.1 million. Section on the right explains the main cost drivers of this increase. Five percent per step increases, three percent on schedule increases, which is CDA, and two and a half percent off-schedule bonus and a small increase for the employer portion of Calpers. Next slide, please. So as a review, this slide is our 2024-2025 draft budget that was presented for our June 2024 Board Meeting. As you can see, total revenues are projected to be 16.2 million. And going further down the expenditures, the academic and non-academic totals reflect the increase in staffing mentioned earlier in the presentation. Benefit totals are a result of employer contributions due to statutory requirements, Calpers, Calsters, all the where built health and welfare benefits and social security payments for the applicable employees. The operating expenses are comprised primarily of expenses involved in program offerings and enrollment growth. And at the bottom of the slide, you'll notice that we have 5.2% of operating expenses set aside as reserved. So next slide, please. So now we'll talk about our budget updates. Next slide, please. So this is a reconciliation of what we presented in June versus the updates that we've made to arrive at our final draft budget. So as you can see, the updates, the first one is an update to our projected net cash as of July 1st. Update number two is a slight increase in our interest revenue. Update number three, the increase is due to additional adjunct salaries. Update number four, several new employees will be hired later in the year, which reduce the annual expense, which is why you show it as being lower. Number five is small net employee benefit increase. Number six, small increase in supplies, and number seven, reduction in several one-time expenses. The eighth update includes increases to our technology build-out and fiscal speech, which includes our administrative office. So this leads us to approximately 5.7 million in ending fund balance with a reserve percentage of 5.9%. Next slide. So this slide shows final budget without the updates mentioned previously. As a summary, we're at 16.2 million of revenues with 69 million of expenses with our ending projected fund balance at 5.7 million. This page represents the draft 2024-2025 budget that I'm asking the Board of Trustees to approve. Next, next slide, please. So our sustainable funding model next steps. Calbright will focus on the following next steps over the next several months. Finalization of our direct assessment competency-based education model. And number two, our DEAC accreditation using our direct assessment competency-based education. Next slide, please. So any questions? Thank you.
Colleagues?
Yeah.
I was looking at you. I already cheated up for you. Board member Haynes.
So I have a few questions, and I need to go back to the slide where you show. Okay, it is the slide that says draft budget, but remind me again, the one-time funds of $22,321 dollars and some change.
Are other expenses?
Under the, under one time, under one time, we have academic salaries at 4.7. We have one-time funds at 2.3 million, and I'm trying to figure, I can't remember, is that because we have?
Slide 10.
Thank you. Oh, on 10, please, thank you for that help. So I'm trying to figure out, I can't remember how the one, the 2.3 million is used as one-time. Is it, is it because those are contracted, they're not employees? What is, what is the?
So typically, what we, we try and have new programs and the related costs for those new programs in the one-time funds, because the idea is to build up our various programs. And so for new programs that we try and implement, we try and fully utilize our one-time funds to that, to that.
So that, okay, but it is under the column for academic salaries. So what specifically?
So a lot of the adjuncts that we were potentially hiring.
That's what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
And Cam, I would say this came up actually in the Simply Budget Subcommittee that I attended with Calbright, and when we do these pilot programs, they start in one time.
Exactly.
If they are successful, they're converted over. As a way of kind of also limit our expenditure.
And expense.
And the last thing I'll add, which is like, consistent with the objectives set forth for the use of one-time funds in the statute.
Okay, and then I have another question on, is it on 12? Okay, so is, so I'm not certain if my question asked at the wrong, on the wrong presentation is still operative relative to, with the, and maybe, and our CEO will answer as well. Do, how much, how much, how much elasticity do we have in terms of our enrollment goals?
We assume enrollment growth in this budget.
Okay.
And so this budget reflects the expectation that our enrollments will grow. And if you remember, with, through our strategic vision, our objectives have, are aligned with year-over-year objectives around enrollment growth. So this accommodates our enrollment.
So, so what is, what is the assumption? What?
Well, it's the same, there's, we have to divide the question a little bit though, too, because there is the existing program enrollment growth.
Correct.
And there are the four areas of new program, and so there's some enrollment growth probably there as well.
So how we reach our enrollment growth-type targets and expectations are conditioned around launching the new programs. So, so new programs will allow and support additional enrollments.
Okay, I have another question that I have to figure out. So I'm finished for the time being.
We'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Southern California trustee Aguinaldo and Rawlings, do you have any questions or comments regarding the draft budget proposal?
No questions here.
It'll come to me, but maybe not right now.
Okay, I want to write you this. I'm going to open it up for public comment. We can come back to you. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
I'm trying.
I, I, okay, so yes, it did come to me. I don't know where, oh, local revenues, thank you. Local revenues are from where? Is it from the interest that's included? Okay, on, okay, got it.
On, on the existing funds that are Svallo County.
Okay, perfect. That's, I just wanted for that clarification. Great, thank you.
And with that, and there is no public comment on the item, this is an action item. We're on item 4.2, colleagues. It would entertain a motion in a second.
I move approval.
Haynes with the motion.
I'll second.
Aguinaldo with the second. With that, can you please call the roll?
Hildegarde, Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Not here.
Hey, I'm sorry. Pamela Haynes. Yes, Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. We're moving on to another section in our agenda, section five. We have a first reading item. We have item 5.1, which is the first reading of the Board Policy 2510 regarding participatory governance. And we have Leticia Ramirez presenting.
Hi, Board President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Executive Committee. This is the DCAM initiative as stated by the Board President. Before you, we have Board Policy 2510 that addresses participatory governance for a first reading. And once this first reading is complete, the item will come back to the Board for adoption as a consent item at a following meeting. So can you start with a little bit of background? I have a PowerPoint. So Board Policy 2510 essentially implements the Education Code and Title V requirements to ensure that faculty, staff, and students have the right to participate effectively in college governance matters. And this is the first time we are adopting a board policy at 2510. And the Board knows we regularly review and update our board policies. However, this board policy has not been previously adopted. As the Board is aware, in terms of your, the other hat you wear as Board Governors, the Board of Governors for the community college system establishes minimum standards regarding how constituency groups should be afforded the opportunity to engage in policy and procedure discussions. And community colleges at the local level adopt those standards that are consistent with the Board of Governors standard, approved standards. Next slide. As you are aware, participatory governance in the community college system, it ensures that key constituency groups are participating in decision-making processes. This does not imply or necessarily always result in complete total agreement. They, all constituency groups are afforded the same level of involvement as is required under Title V on matters that are relevant to them. And also, with respect to the academic senate, they have a special role given their expertise when it comes to academic and professional matters. Even while folks do participate in this decision-making process, the final decisions rest with the Board or designated. So why is participatory governance important and integral to the community college system? It allows the system and colleges to benefit from the expertise and analytical skills of many. It promotes trust and cooperation. It really enhances a commitment to implementation when it comes to having buy-in and having diverse set of views shared and present in the decision-making process. Next slide. Participatory governance at Calbright. So despite the fact that we are just amending and we are just adopting this board policy to address participatory governance, we have been engaging in participatory governance at Calbright from the very beginning. Our ethos and our culture is rooted in collaboration and innovation. And that helps ensure that when decisions are being made at Calbright, we are engaging all development constituency groups. Some examples of a participatory governance that's like at Calbright include the development of our strategic vision, where we engage all constituency groups in more focused groups or interviews to have their perspectives and their feedback as we develop our strategic vision for this coming period. We also have Calbright Champions, which these are subsets or workforce group, I'm sorry, task groups or workgroups that really work on identifying the, the needs and the priorities and the perspectives of different constituency groups. We constantly, we also engage in a lot of cross-departmental consultation. And we also have had the benefit of being a fully online and remote college allows us to really engage in more wide-scale gatherings than a traditional community college campus. For example, in March of this year, we had our inaugural virtual Calbright Summit, where it was multiple day, two-day virtual summit where all members of the Calbright College Where it was um multiple day to day virtual summit where all members of the uh Calbright College um. Constituency group uh in constituency groups engaged. We also have regular monthly on hands meetings and communities in practice. So these are convenings that take place. Online and really um you have upwards of over a hundred of our staff. Um, and faculty and administration administrators uh logging in to really have an opportunity to not only um. Hear about developments and initiatives within the college, but also have an opportunity to have a say or uh provide input and feedback as things are being developed. Next slide please. We also participatory governance at Calbright, um, we also have actual governance committees, as I mentioned, um. You know, participatory governance is key to how we operate and our existing governance committees are the curriculum committee. Which works um uh under the uh. Coordination of the VP of Learning and Instruction, we have a bu- a budget advisory committee. That um worked to support the Chief Financial Officer in the development of the uh budget. We have the EEOC Advisory Committee that was formed, uh put together our EEO uh plan, which the board approved in May. Um, and participatory governance also looks uh at all of our board policies and administrative procedures. We currently have an AP Administrative Procedure Committee and a Governance Council, which is represent uh, which is made up of um individuals from faculty, administration. Classified staff. And um really support the effort of our efforts to review our BPs and our APs to ensure that they're consistent with our current practices and the law. We also consult with the Associated Students of Calvert, meaning of of Calvert College. So as you may recall in May, um, our student body orientation changed their name and that was one of the first times that we. Had a formal participatory governance action with them in terms of presenting a board policy. It was actually, it came from them. Their desire to amend the board policy, um having them take a make a recommendation vote. And um, as I said, it's the first time, but it's the beginning of how we're now formalizing participatory governance at Calbright and the adoption of this board policy is the first step in change. Next slide. So before you um is the BP and it outlines um the principles that guide how we engage participatory governance at Calvert. Those principles are student first. Inclusive, innovative and nimble. And we um at all times are really trying to. Make sure that our culture of innovation of being uh. Uh iterative and also collaborative are really uh can thread through how we engage with it. We, in terms of uh policies and procedures that have a significant effect on students. We always practice a student first approach and give every reasonable consideration to the Associated Students at Calvert College. Next slide. For academic and professional matters, those referred to as ten plus one, we will consult collegially and rely primarily on the Calbright's Academic Senate. Rely primarily means that the recommendations of the Academic Senate will normally be accepted and only in exceptional circumstances. And for compelling reasons, will the recommendations not be accepted. With regards to classified professional staff, they shall have the opportunity to participate in the development policies and procedures that have a significant effect on staff. Everything contained in our board policy is consistent with the education foot and title five. Next slide. In terms of next step, um, the adoption of the board policy will come back to that next board meeting and um. Following that, we will have the President CEO approve the administrative procedure. For twenty five, ten, which will actually implement how participatory government will outline how we implement participatory governance at Calbright. It will establish the President's Leadership Council, which will be a representative body uh that will consist of all constituency group. Stakeholders and representatives and it will be key to us kind of streamlining communication. We will also work on uh streamlining our BP and AP review process. Now that we've reached this um point of maturity as an institution and have a BP in place. That completes my report. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. Colleagues, any uh questions or comments on this first reading item?
President Costa, one question. My microphone is very loud. I don't know if it's loud on your end as well. Um, I'm reading the um. The draft and it looks like the word affect and the word effect are used almost interchangeably, even though they're not supposed to be. So I just wanted to make sure that they were. Used in the right way.
Appreciate that feedback.
That gives us an opportunity to, um, since this is a first reading, we have the opportunity to review and make any grammatical changes to the policy before it's adopted.
Thank you.
I have a, just a process question. So, um. This is the first reading, um, and if I recall, you you basically said that um um the faculty um have have been part of the review process. And has the student um, the student um, um, sent it been?
Uh, not on the BP, but on the AP who will engage in.
Okay, all right. And then just um. I liked it that we, we made um, we included the students um. Uh, one through nine um elements here. Um. That's not normally found in, in a, in a document of this kind, but and and that's probably because this is relatively recent. That they came up, but we probably a year, maybe a year and a half. But um, since we are supposed to be about students, it's really nice to see. That they're gonna participate in this process.
Thank you for that comment because I actually reminded me that, that I should highlight something. So the timing of the board policy, uh, if you. Kind of look back on where we've been for the, this calendar year, our strategic vision was adopted in January of twenty twenty four. And it took us a couple of months, but you know, that's the foundational document as well, right? And the strategic vision didn't form. Um, um, kind of this, this document as well. And that's where um. Student first really comes from, right? The next example will be the Venn diagram of all these documents.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are two on public comments. The first one is, would you clarify the difference, if any, between constituency involvement, involvement such as focus groups and participatory governance? The second public comment is, in what fashion will BP twenty five, ten involve the ACC student government moving forward?
So the first question is, are there people associated with those comments?
Yes.
Okay, we, we should probably state who says the public comment if it's provided.
Okay, it is um both public comments are made by Brandy Weaver, the president of. I associate.
Of who? President of?
Of our student body.
Our student body.
Okay, um, Chair, do you want me to?
Yes.
Okay, so the first question, um, so participatory governance in the most simplest terms is about participating in the decision making process. Um, with the decision ultimately being the responsibility of the board or the designated. When it comes to uh different kind of methods of engagement, if you will. Focus groups are an opportunity or a venue that Calbright uses to gather information and data to inform the final decision. Whether it be a policy, an initiative or a program. Um, so that's the, the connection, right, of, of really being able to uh connect with uh stakeholders in a. Formal way to gather their thoughts and then that's one. Um, with respect to the Associated Students of Calvert College, um, I will say in their involvement BP twenty five, ten, um, this has been uh. A bit of a uh. You started working on the board policy and for various reasons, uh, we had to pause and start and restart. And um in the interest of moving this item forward, so because of its, it's the initial step, right? It's a reflection and it essentially mirrors what is already in the law and what the community college is required to comply with. Um, we did not have an opportunity to formally meet with the Associated Students of Calvert College to discuss the BP. However, we um our intention is to discuss the administrative procedure, which is really kind of the, the details of the how. And um that is where we feel uh the, there is a great opportunity. And um it makes the most sense to have their input. That's where it's more valuable, right? And I'm, and I will say that as this person who was trying to quarterback this effort, because it is not a, a one. Person effort when it comes to this board policy, um, you know, I, I was personally remiss on that um and not being able to get to student body uh in time.
Although I would know, it's, it's first reading. So this is an opportunity to provide comment between first and second reading. So we appreciate the public comment.
I'll, I'll add one more thing with respect to the AP under development, which is the President's Leisure uh Leadership Council has a structural space for. The student body leader on the President's Council, and I think that is so critically important for an institution like ours. And so. I did just want to highlight that as we think about implementation in the broad strokes of the board policy, when we think about how to make it actionable. Um, we are also looking to um the full participation from um, from um the Student Academic Senate, the Student Body President uh at the leadership table.
President Costa, there is one more.
Okay.
Public comment by Brandy Weaver, the President of the ACCC. Um, she says that. The ASCC student government is eager to collaborate with the greater Cal- Calbright community and participatory governance process going forward.
Great, thank you, Brandy. Appreciate those comments. Um, is that the uh end of public comment on the second?
Yes, there is no more public comment.
Okay, so that's a first reading. We will see this policy again, um, and there may be some slight changes. Um, and look forward to seeing it come again uh for our approval um under second reading. Um, next up, we have our information and reports section of the agenda. We have our standing item six point two, which is reports on contracts and purchases. Trustees, are there any questions or comments on this? Seeing uh, oh.
None in SoCal.
Okay, great. With that, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Great, thank you so much. Um, we do not have any constituency group reports, so we will have no items in section seven of our agenda. We'll now open it up for public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
All right, colleagues, the hour is one thirty five PM and with that, the business of the Executive Committee of the Board of Trustees is now complete and we may adjourn. Thank you for your participation.